Would all the council members please check in?
I'm going to call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, December 18th, 2019 to order, please. Could we have roll call?
We have 12 present and zero absent.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonough, would you lead us in the prayer and the pledge, please?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen to be.
Amen.
Pledge and reasons to fly of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for any public comment on any items on the consent agenda. Go ahead.
I'm Eddie Vanrodt, 2601 Grand Avenue. Speaking as president of the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc. Reference section one, Consent Agenda, B Communications. Communication requesting council commissioners authorize the chief executive to form a Butte Silver Bow hazardous-to-human-health-heavy-metals contaminant task force. We do hope that you and the CEO Palmer will take this serious situation seriously. Much has been done to mitigate and minimize human exposure to the hazardous-to-human-health heavy metals contaminants present in our community. But we most definitely are starting to have a preponderance of evidence that indicates we still have a hazardous-to-human-health heavy metals health problem in our community. Maybe the low-grade heavy metals contamination is not killing enough people fast enough to be classified as an EPA or a DEQ qualifying health emergency. But we already have four studies and another one coming down the pike that indicate there is still a serious hazardous-to-human-health heavy metals contaminants health risk situation in the Butte Silver Bow community. I emailed you a summary of the conclusions and the situation of the published studies. We need a local government policy attitude that will address this issue in a holistic, serious manner, a policy that encourages a willingness to seek and implement a holistic solution that will finally resolve the situation to the point that we can say with confidence to our neighbors and to the rest of the world that Butte is a healthy and safe place in which to live and work. As to communication number 10, 19582, requesting this council commissioners to invite a Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazardous risk to human health of heavy metals contaminants present in our community. We would hope that this council would be interested enough in learning about just what are the hazards and the risks that we are facing from long-term exposure to heavy metals, that you would segregate out this communication, concur with the request for the council chair to extend an invitation to the state of Montana's Department of Health and Human Services toxicologist recommended by the director of the state of Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services office noted in the communication, and hold this communication in abeyance in the committee of the whole until such time as that presentation was made. As to communication 19597, unfortunately, I did not see any notice to the public and the media relative to this presentation. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment on any item on the consent agenda?
My name is Northie Tretheway, and thank you for letting me come and address you tonight. I live in Butte, Montana, and I work with Restore Our Creek, or what's known as Rock here. I'm here to make comments on issues associated with the release of Silver Lake water to augment stream flow in Butte, an issue that the commission will be discussing tonight. Most of you know that Restore Our Creek Coalition continues work, which is now more than four years going on, on the effort to engage the community with the mission to get the first mile of Silver Bow Creek restored from Texas Avenue to the confluence with Black Tail Creek. We were involved in working with the community to put documents like this together, and also in a very short period of time gathered signatures, 3,500 signatures, within a month's time a few years ago, in support of restoring that creek. Early in the ROCC effort, Rock effort, you may remember people asking the question, where is the water going to come from? As a matter of fact, I recall Chief Executive Dave Palmer, you better smile on this one, Dave, during his campaign for chief executive saying in the debate at the country club that he was for our effort to restore the creek, but he didn't know where the water was going to come from. Well, we've always known there is plenty of water, and in fact, the Bureau of Mines at Rock's urging produced a report that was sent to many of you, where it cited numerous sources of water for the restored Silver Bow Creek, including Silver Lake. So it's not surprising to us that Silver Lake is now being discussed with you. We have MRI releasing treated water. We have Silver Lake water. There is plenty of water, and it should enter at Texas Avenue once the creek is restored. Which brings me to a point where I can tell you that Water and Environmental Technologies, WET, known to most of you, an independent subcontractor located in Butte, and using a funding grant from the EPA and working through CTEC, is working on a feasibility analysis for the first mile of a restored and lined Silver Bow creek. WET is close to completing their report, and they will release and present the findings to the community in just a few weeks. And I'm told, so far, the results look promising, based on comments that Elizabeth Erickson made last night at the CTEC meeting. I'll close with the comment that we're fortunate to have a confluence, so to speak, of so many events coming together, one event being the feasibility analysis coming out on the first mile of Silver Bow Creek from Texas Avenue. In addition, the events of Silver Lake water discharging near Butte makes water available, plus the release of MRI's treated waters, which is another source of available water. And of course, another event is the release of the CD. All these events are coming out at pretty much the same time. We have an opportunity to make this a comprehensive solution instead of a continuation of the piecemeal and patchwork type solutions that are usually associated with all types of superfund operable units. So with that, please keep in mind that we do have a feasibility study that will be presented by WET in just a few weeks on the first mile, in conjunction with the release of water from both Silver Lake and MRI, and the decisions that will be forthcoming from the CD. They should all be considered together in order to form a unique solution that endures for Butte's future, a future that must include a restored creek from Texas Avenue through the heart of Butte. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Sister Mary Jo McDonald, 438 West Porfree, Butte, Montana. Here as a citizen, Chief Executive Palmer and members of the commission. I take this opportunity to address you, and I apologize for not being here last week, but that was due to circumstances I couldn't control. But I'm here tonight because of the Silver Lake water system. And I think Silver Lake water system came on board to Butte, Montana, and is owned by the citizens of this community. It's not owned by any companies. It's owned by the citizens of Butte, Montana, and it is their right to use that water and direct the usage of that water. And you, as their representatives, need to do that and do it very consciously. For Butte Silver Bow, that water will always be there if we are careful stewards of it. And I know MRI has done a wonderful thing here, and I congratulate Mark Thompson in wanting to reserve more water from Silver Lake so that it would be available for Butte usage as we develop this community. But they will also gain from reserving some of that water in the event that there would be some issue with the polishing plant and the treatment facility. They would have the water that they need for their processing. And so we both know that's a win-win. What I do want to say to you is that, over the course of the years, when the lawsuit was settled, MRI had the rights to 1 million gallons of water a day at the cost of $238,000 a year. Now, I noticed that in this proposal, it's kind of like we want to establish a process and a baseline monetary value of Silver Lake water system. That doesn't belong to a company to decide. That belongs to you people and the citizens of Butte to decide. And so there is justice involved in all of this, because if we do not have the payments for the water that is really due to this community, this community is not going to thrive and survive. And so I also noticed that the proposal is that there would be a change in the amount of water that they would get. And I think if that's true, and I already warned Mark, there should be an increase in the funding that comes to Butte for the infrastructure here. Originally, the infrastructure was to be infused with that $238,000 a year for the system of the water company. Now, not too long ago, maybe four years or so, that was changed. And I have never seen a copy of the court decision, but I would love to see it, that determined, you know, that whole process, that it could be spread out. Because originally, in the negotiated settlement for the water company, that was determined by the group that it would be used to further supporting the changes necessary in the Butte water system. Now, we've had raises and increases that are supposedly helping to do that. But if we were good stewards, that money still would be coming into the water company to do that for the people of this community. They don't deserve all the increases, and they surely don't deserve a water price in their homes that is one of the highest in the state of Montana, other than smaller communities that really have to pony up a lot more for their water. You know, Butte is very fortunate. We have great sources of water. But we also need to be good stewards. And we need to protect the water distribution system. We need to protect all of the things that take part in delivering good water to our citizens and protecting our citizens with the right amount of water. So what I'm proposing is that you might reconsider this a little bit, and you might set up a committee that would decide and discuss how the fees should be assigned to companies coming in and wishing to use Silver Lake water. You also need to be aware of what the NRD is doing in their two-time experiment to flush the water of Silver Lake down into Warm Springs Creek. Excuse me. How much did they infuse into the community of Butte for that water? And who paid for it? That water's not free. Somebody needs to say, no, wait a minute. We can't do that this way. How many millions of gallons did they use? If MRI could have 1 million a gallon a year, that would be 12 million gallons, and they were paying $238,000 a year for that water. How much did the NRDC pay Butte for the experiment that they did? It's called good business practices. And it's called business practices for the people that you represent, so that they don't get set up with another increase in their water. All of that money should be infused right back into this community for water. And so my plea to you is that you truly look at that proposal again before it just automatically becomes law, and say, maybe there are some things here that need to change a little bit. Now, if anybody would like to, I have the 1996 record of decision for the Water Service Agreement, and be happy to share that with anybody. I have quite a bit of the history on how that all came about and came to be, and I would be happy to share all of that information with anybody. And I can tell you, in 2009, MRI used about 3 million gallons. In 2010, they used about 2.5 million. 2011, they used less than 2 million. 2012, they used 3.25 million gallons. 2013, probably 5 million. And 2014, 3.5 million gallons of water. But they paid $238,000 for 1 million. We're not good stewards. We need to become better stewards and monitor what happens. I can also tell you that prior to 2015, ARCO was into an agreement with Butte Silver Bow, and they paid $500,000 a year for the water that they use to infuse into Warm Springs Creek. So there is history there, too, that would give you the cost of that water. Then in 2015, our Public Works decided ARCO should pony up a little more money and into the millions. I always heard 8 million. Someone said it was more than that. They were told they'd have to come up with $8 million to redo the distribution line from Silver Lake. And ARCO just simply said, no thanks, and they walked away, and Butte never received that $500,000 a year again. We need to be better stewards of water. The books are out there today. The next civil war in this country will be fought over water. So I beg you to please reconsider, and you become the ones dictating what the water is valued at and what it should be charged, for everybody who wants to have that water. Thank you.
Thanks, Sister. Any other public comment? Joe?
Joe Griffin, 1121 West Diamond. Chief Executive, excuse me, Chief Executive Palmer, members of the council. I'm here also to speak about the water agreement, Silver Lake water deal. I have a long technical history of working across this watershed. I have had actually responsibilities from the Berkeley Pit and monitoring water levels in the Berkeley Pit all the way to the Clark Fork. And one of, in my career, one of the important things to me was, I was given a lot of responsibility for the design and the cleanup of Warm Springs Creek. And so I tend to take a watershed look at how water's distributed and what is best for the natural resource, I guess. That's kind of my own personal perspective in all of this. I've looked very carefully at Silver Bow Creek lately. I've given a couple of presentations of where Silver Bow Creek has been and where it is now, and maybe where it'll be in the future. So I'm not opposed to this agreement, but I think there's more to consider. It's what I do like about this agreement. I guess it's a four-year experiment, and to me, that's a reasonable thing. But when I say I take the watershed approach, the water we're talking about, we call it Silver Lake water. In reality, that's Warm Springs Creek. That's its natural habitat. So it kind of concerns me that it's sort of a robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of thing. So I guess that's why I took notice and decided I would come up here and speak to you guys tonight. Now, I know it is, as Sister just said, it's a hugely valuable resource, and it's worth a lot of money for this community. And its principal purpose has always been, for us, industrial use. It supports the mine. It has supported the mine for a long time, and it will support, it supports other industry, and hopefully, it's going to support new industry in the future. So that's, that's an important point for us. Like I said, I'm a scientist, and I see the, I see the reason why we might have a four-year test of this water release. I guess I would add into that a request, and that request would be that it is monitored well. And one suggestion I have is we have three really important USGS stations on Silver Bow Creek. One of them is right near the confluence. I think that'll be moved upstream from the confluence ways. It's now being influenced by the flows from Horseshoe Bend. The next one's right at the downstream end of Butte. That one's called SS07. And then there's one all the way at Opportunity. And those, they get, you can get on the internet and check out the flows at any given time. They routinely sample them for all sorts of water quality parameters. But the one thing that's missing, and the one thing that's important to this discussion, even to Montana Resources, is the reason they may be providing this water is it's colder water and its temperature in the creek. That is one of the things that is certainly holding Silver Bow Creek back from its full ecological potential. And so I would ask that maybe you guys push to have real-time temperature added to those three USGS stations. It would say a lot about how this four-year experiment works. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other public comment? Evan?
Chief Executive Palmer, members of the council. My name's Evan Barrett. I live at 807 West Silver in Butte. I'm here, I happen to be a member of the Restore Our Creek Coalition, also of CTEC. You have, I'm here to briefly address communication 29, which is the Silver Lake water communication. You have the privilege and responsibility of figuring out what to do with Silver Lake water, along with all the other water things you have the responsibility of dealing with now. A little historical perspective is important, a context for where we are. The Silver Lake system is part of this really intricate engineering of water for Butte that was done by ACM in order to support mining in Butte and the industrial activities here, the smelter in Anticonda. We have water that, a pretty amazing system, as you know, water that comes all the way over the Continental Divide from the Big Hole River, from Molten, from Basin Creek, and then all the way from Silver Lake. It's a pretty amazing engineering process to provide the water that was needed to industrialize mining in this area. In that process, the Butte Water Company that you now are responsible for was owned and operated by the Anticonda Company. It was a private enterprise. When Dennis Washington bought the mines, he didn't particularly want to have the, I was working with him on it, didn't particularly want to have the water company, but ARCO insisted that if you're going to take the mine, you're going to take everything we have in six counties, including the water company, including the watershed that produces the water, including the Silver Lake system. Now with the, obviously, with the smelter closing down, remember, it's being pipelined through Anticonda and coming to Butte. There's less demand for that water, and it's been used for various and sundry things since that time, including in-stream flow, which is an important thing in this industrialized area. If we want to restore the natural condition of our streams and rivers and fisheries, that water is very precious. Now, I would say, I want to compliment, and I think we need to recognize, the critically important role, the fact that you have this ability to do this, is because there was a settlement of a lawsuit. And then that settlement, that water company, and everything attendant to it, including the Silver Lake system, was transferred from the private sector, being at that time owned by Dennis Washington and the mines, his operations. The settlement said it would come to Butte Silver Bow. And so since that time, huge amounts of energy and thought have gone into doing this thing right. Particular compliments need to go to Sister Mary Jo. It was she and her brother, and former Waukesha Mayor Jimmy Shea, and a few other people that brought a lawsuit to bring improvements in that system. And the settlement of that lawsuit brought it to Butte Silver Bow into public ownership. And by the way, most people, a lot of the leaders of Butte, did not like the fact that that lawsuit was filed. So God bless Sister Mary Jo for doing the right thing. So now that's, that's been done, and now we have, now we have the opportunity with Silver Lake to do the right things. The use, it's a big day for Butte when the Silver Lake water is going to be brought to Butte, not solely and only for industrial purposes, but to start augmenting the flow of streams up here, not down on the other side of Anaconda. Now, the Warm Springs Creek needs are tremendous and important. But there's enough Silver Lake water to help Warm Springs Creek do the right thing for Bull Trout, and to help Butte Silver Bow be able to do the right thing for what we're doing here with Silver Bow Creek here. And so it's important that we go ahead and proceed to find ways to bring water here, Silver Lake water here, and put it to productive use that way. So the communication, not addressing the cost issue, but the use issue, is something that we should look positive upon. And we should look positive upon it augmenting the flow of Black Tail Creek, which quickly becomes Silver Bow Creek, and Silver Bow Creek. And I think we need to also keep in mind, as a council, that upon the completion, hopefully upon the completion of the study that Nordee mentioned, which would show that a restored creek is possible, and it to be consistent with the remedy in the CD, that a lined creek, initially, restored creek for the first mile can be put in. And the people who've been working on this, and the citizens, the thousands of citizens who participated in this, have saw this, have seen this creek as properly starting at Texas Avenue. So as you bring Silver Lake water here now, to basically probably start having an impact on the confluence, it's very important that you keep in mind the need for that water and the other waters that were result of the, that were documented in the study, to enter at Texas Avenue. So the first mile of Silver Bow Creek can ultimately be a real creek. And this water is an important part of that. Congratulations to you, but also to Montana Resources for having the foresight and the willingness to do what's right for the community here on this thing. And I can tell you, as a citizen, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Any other comment?
Chief Executive Palmer and members of the commission, my name is Alex Leon, and I work for the Clark Fork Coalition as a restoration scientist in Missoula. The Clark Fork Coalition is a science-based advocacy organization that has been around for thirty-five years and is dedicated to protecting and restoring water resources in the Clark Fork Basin. The CFC, it's short for the Clark Fork Coalition, has some big-picture questions related to the pending agreement between Butte Silver Bow and MR to purchase additional water from the Silver Lake system. Based on our reading, this agreement will result in the transport of clean water from the Warm Springs Creek Basin that will be pumped and piped forty miles over a divide where it will be mixed with contaminated water. While we appreciate the positive benefits for Black Tail and Upper Silver Bow Creek, we are also worried there will be negative consequences for Warm Springs Creek, an important tributary to the Clark Fork River and the last Bull Trout stronghold in the area. The presence or absence of Bull Trout is basically a report card on how we are treating a river. The Silver Lake water system, as has been discussed here, is incredibly complex. Silver Lake is sped by surface water from Storm Lake and Twin Lakes and groundwater. In addition, water from Silver Lake seeps out into Georgetown Lake and Warm Springs Creek itself. Because of this complexity, we encourage you to do more research into how the proposed agreement will influence the overall water balance of key water resources in the headwaters. Most importantly, we are concerned that this agreement might prevent finding the best possible remedy in Butte, because it encourages dilution over long-term solutions. Butte deserves a robust and resilient cleanup. Because this agreement is so complex, and there are lots of moving parts, we do urge that you guys take another look and don't rush into this agreement without more information. No matter how you vote, I do hope that you would consider putting together a stakeholder engagement meeting in the near future, so we can discuss the details and potential management implications going forward with downstream stakeholders in Anaconda and Duroge. I have a handout with some additional questions I put together. I don't want to take too much more of your time, but if you're interested, I could pass this around. And thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of the minutes of the December fourth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting minutes. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the December fourth regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the December fourth minutes. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? We'll do a verbal vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do not have any items not addressed on tonight's agenda under Chief Executive's report. I just want to mention that the Committee of the Whole next week is on Monday, due to the Christmas being on Wednesday and Christmas Eve on Tuesday. So Committee of the Whole meeting will be on Monday. Under Chief, further on the report, I just want to mention, there's been a lot of talk about the water agreement with Silver Lake. And Nordee even mentioned that, you know, I had stated, where is the water going to come from? And I think that, I know that we've, Butte Silver Bow has been working with MR for quite some time on this agreement to figure this out. And we think it's one of the possible solutions for the future creek. And we are moving ahead with a four-year experimental agreement. And I'm personally thankful for MR to be willing to agree to it, to pay for it, and we will be getting some money for this while we're doing this experiment. And it won't be at any cost to Butte Silver Bow. So we will be able to find out, it's going to take five, seven years for this cleanup to take place, where we can start the creek at Texas Avenue. But until then, we've, it's a perfect time to do this experiment, to find out where the water is going to come from, and if Silver Lake water will work. So I'm, I think it's a win-win situation for Butte Silver Bow, and I'm all in favor of it. So then moving on to Chief Executive's report on the Superfund, we're still waiting for the EPA and the Department of Justice to review everything. And we were hoping for the beginning of December, but it looks like with the holidays and everything, it won't be until January when documents are released for public review. So we will just keep waiting for that. And we'll move on to Section One, bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. Number one is a public hearing, Communication nineteen dash five six seven. Angie Malikin, Public Works Budget Analyst, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a public hearing for December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. Angie, the floor is yours. Oh, do we have proof of publication? County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publications for both Section One and Section Two, and they both appear to be in order.
Thank you. Angie, now the floor is yours.
Chief Executive, Council of Commissioners, I'm Angie Malikin, I live at one-two-two-one East First Street. The purpose of this public hearing is for comments related to allocating unanticipated revenue from the Greenway Service District to the Parks Department for the purchase of a snow blower attachment for the skid steer. In the September twelfth board meeting, the Parks Department was awarded ten thousand dollars to purchase the snow blower attachment. The attachment is needed on the trail systems to allow the pathways to be fully cleared of snow. Currently, they're using a four-wheeler with a snow plow, but the, not all, but the areas of trails have tall weeds and other obstructions, so this will allow the Parks Department to fully clear the trails.
Thanks, Angie. Are there any questions from the commission for Angie? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and call for proponents. Are there any proponents? Dory.
Chief Executive Palmer, members of the commission, I'm Dory Skircrude. I'm the Community Development Coordinator and the Project Manager for the Silver Bow Creek Greenway. I just want to support Angie in this, at this public hearing. There's been a lot of discussions because of some constraints and situations, especially underpasses where we're in some constricted areas. And this, the particular snow blower is going to be, it's going to be a certain benefit to keeping that clear, keeping the trails open and accessible for our citizens and our visitors. So we have a, have an agreement with the Public Works currently. They do operations maintenance along, on the trail, and we've had a great partnership with them and hope to see this continue. And this little piece of equipment will be a nice addition to preserving the trail. Thank you.
For any other proponents? Third and final call for proponents? Seeing none, we'll move to opponents. Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Third and final call for opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, move into number two, Section Two, the bid openings. Communication nineteen dash five-five-one, Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Council of Commissioners allow time on the December eighteenth meeting for the two thousand and twenty economic mill levy fund proposals to be opened on Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Burns, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. These are the proposals for the ED Mill Levy, so I'll just open them up and read who they're from and the amount that they're asking for. And then they probably should be referred to the Economic Development Committee of the council. The first proposal is from Main Street Uptown Butte. They're requesting ten thousand dollars. Main Street Uptown Butte, ten thousand. The second one is from Main Street Uptown Butte again.
Commissioner Anderson, do you have a question?
Yes. Karen Burns, could you let, does it say on there what it's for? Just the two from Main Street Uptown Butte, I imagine one's the Folk Festival.
The first one is for Public Street Features.
Public Street, thank you.
The second request is for the Folk Festival, and that is for fifteen thousand dollars. The next proposal is from the World Museum of Mining. And this is for sixteen thousand, six hundred. The next one is from Advantage Butte. And they are requesting thirty thousand. This proposal is from the Urban Forestry Board. And they are requesting six thousand. This one is from ACK Properties. They are requesting thirteen thousand, five hundred. This proposal is from Alpha Technologies. They are requesting four thousand dollars. And ten thousand, excuse me. I think if we add it all up, Alpha Technologies is requesting nineteen thousand, I believe. The next proposal is from the Montana Gaelic Cultural Society. And the amount requested is four thousand dollars. This proposal is from High Ore Ceramics. And the amount requested is two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Two thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. This proposal, the last proposal, is from the BLDC, Butte Local Development Corporation. And they are requesting forty thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion that we refer the bid packages or the requests to the Economic Mill Levy Committee.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to refer the bid, or request, grant request to the Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you. Just curious, I know this is one mill plus, I believe we had some takebacks from two thousand and nineteen. Do we have a full, kind of a full amount that is going to be dispersed? Put anybody on the spot? Karen? Or Dinette?
Dinette, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Commissioner Shaw and members of council.
Dinette, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, Commissioner Shaw and members of Council, it's about $83,000 is the budget, I believe.
I think it's a little slightly less than that. It's like 78 something, but yeah. It depends upon how much interest earnings from now, from July 1st till today that we can collect, so.
Okay. 78.
Yeah.
Around that. Thank you very much.
Does everyone understand the motion? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
We have 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Next is presentation, Communication 10-597, Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting Council of Commissioners permission to have a presentation on community residential facility licensing by Carter Anderson, Division Administrator, State of Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Lori, did you want to talk?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the Council, I'm Lori Casey, Planning Director, for the record. The Judiciary Committee had asked that somebody from the state come and talk about the licensing for community residential facilities. Carter Anderson is the Division Administrator for the Department of Public Health, and he's here to kind of go over the licensing requirement for those facilities, if they have a complaint process, how that is handled, and to answer your questions. So, I will turn it over to Carter Anderson.
Mr. Anderson.
Chief Executive, members of the Commission, Carter Anderson, Division Administrator for Quality Assurance with the Department of Public Health and Human Services. I don't have a long presentation for you today, so I was going to leave as much time as I can to try to answer most of your questions. But briefly, the Quality Assurance Division, our mission is to protect the public health and safety of the people of Montana. We try to do that through licensing and review of over 1,700 different facilities across the state of Montana. That's everything from hospitals and nursing homes, all the way to daycares, anything that has a license, that's healthcare-related. We license those facilities. As far as what I think this group's interested in, I think you're more interested in the residential types of programs that are out there, and there's probably 20 to 25 maybe different categories of residential programs that we have that you can license, whether you're in the developmental disabilities, mental health, adults, substance abuse, senior long-term care, there are numerous ones. Each one of those has its own standards, its own licensing requirements, and can be very different and have different parts of our bureaus that they're licensed under, but they're all underneath the Quality Assurance Division, so I can talk, answer questions about some specifically. I will tell you, though, that licensing is not 100% about money and financing, but a lot of it has tied to that. The purpose for licensing can be for reimbursement purposes, in a lot or majority of the cases, about 90% of the time. Some facilities types are required to get a license, but generally, there are some that don't require a license. So, if you're an FFN, a Family, Friends and Neighbors daycare program, you can choose to be licensed or not, based on whether or not you want to receive reimbursement. The same would apply for several other different types of categories. If you want to serve seniors out here in Montana and you want to be a retirement home, you don't have to get a license. But if you want to be an assisted living, you do. And that's tied to the Medicaid/Medicare reimbursement streams that are out there. So, if there's funding, it's a tie, it's federal funding. If you're an alcohol and drug treatment program, for instance, in outpatient, and you want to get the alcohol tax money, you have to get licensed. If you don't, then you can, you don't have to have a license. Does that make sort of sense? I want to make sure that. And I can be a little more specific with any questions that you may have about different categories that are out there. Lori had mentioned the complaint process. Everything that we license has a portal on our website for complaints. We take complaints in any form that we get them, whether they're, I get phone calls on my cellphone, and that's fine. We will listen to anybody's complaint, and we follow up and do inspections on complaints. All of our licensing inspections and our complaint inspections are posted on our website in our public information. We can get you the, you can find them right on, if you type into your Google QAD Montana, you'll find our website. And through that portal there, you can find every license type that we have, every complaint that's out there. What we post is a statement of deficiencies that we find, or whether, if there was no deficiencies found in that investigation, we'll post that. And then if there were deficiencies found, we'll post what it is. There are plans of corrections then that the state, the facilities then submit to the state that we approve or don't approve, depending on what they do and what they're, what's in there. If we approve those, then those are not posted, although they are public information, we can get them out. It's just our computer system doesn't allow us to post them out there the way we'd like to. We're working on some new systems there. But again, I think you have some specific stuff that you're interested in with the community residential types of programs, and I'm just going to kind of throw it out there for you guys to answer any questions. Anybody but Jim has a question to ask, so. Yeah, and we'll try to help you to answer anything you may want to know about those types of programs.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Anderson, from the Council? Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I think what we're, you know, we've had some concerns about, you know, some of the halfway houses, and also the ones that are licensed and the ones that aren't unlicensed. What, I think one of the questions also is, what is the process where these licensed ones can't, can't get the, how do they get, go about the state of Montana to get licensed? And what requirements are there? Public hearings that these folks have to go through to your, or is this all local that they have to go through, or is there any...
We're the state of Montana. Everything starts with a piece of paper. You know, so you have to put in for a license application to do that. And then, for any type of facility, we're going to go and we're going to review policy and procedures that they're going to submit. We're going to ask them to submit what their policies are, their procedures are. We're going to ask them what their staffing's going to be. Depending on the type of license they're at, there's requirements that they'll have to meet for that, and we'll read through the policies that they have on those. Generally, if it's a residential program, we're going to go out and physically see the facility and make sure it meets standards, that the water quality's there, that the refrigerator works at the right temperature, the hot water's the right temperature, all of those types of physical plant things are being met. And again, there are varying requirements based on the types of facilities. There's actually four different types of halfway houses and substance abuse that you can license. If you're really curious, you can go onto the Administrative Rules website, and I'm sure if you just look up Montana Administrative Rules, you can find it. It's in the 3710.106 category, you'll see all the categories that we license in there. And you can, like I said, there's four different types of substance abuse halfway houses that we license. And that's all based on the level of intensity, and they then have different requirements for each one based on that level of intensity. So, some may require, let's say, awake staff at night to supervise. Others may not require awake staff, they may just require them to have staff. And that isn't necessarily written in the policy, in our rules, but it is what we review in policy, and we won't license if we don't think they're meeting the health and safety standards for that type of program. Does that even come close to answering your questions?
Follow-up? I believe so. I, okay, I guess one of my other questions would be then, if we in Butte-Silverboro wanted to have to hold public hearings, like, one of the concerns is also for the neighbors. You know, the neighbors don't want to wake up one morning and have a halfway house, you know, next, next door. You know, there's, there has been some concerns. Would it be kosher for Butte-Silverboro to hold public hearings, or to, to...
Honestly, I can't weigh in on that issue. I can only tell you what we license and what we don't license, and how we do it in ours. So, if we get an application, then we'll make the decisions whether or not we're going to license, based on the information that we have. That particular process is outside of our purview.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Around those lines that Commissioner Sorge just asked, what would be a reason that you guys would deny a permit?
Why would we deny a license?
Here, yeah, a license, excuse me.
Well, if we didn't feel like that their policies and procedures were meeting what we would call the health and safety standards that we would have, then we would deny or delay. There have been some recent applications that we've had in some other types of programs where we've had to go back and forth with facilities numerous times to get their policy and procedures up to standard. I mean, part of our goal is to help people to get up to standard, not just to say, well, you don't meet the goals, so we're not going to let you license. We try to help them to get up to the standard by going over what do they need to do, how can we help them to rewrite their policies, how can we help them to meet the standards? And we'll do that prior to issuing a license.
Follow-up? Commissioner Morgan.
And then, who... Who is required to get a license if they're not looking for any state funding or any other funding? Can, can somebody create a halfway house, not expect any state funding, and just do it without going through the license procedure?
You know, I mean, I can just tell you that if it's a landlord/tenant type of arrangement, we don't get into those. If they want to call themselves like an assisted living program, even if they don't accept Medicaid waiver clients, they have to license because they're calling themselves an assisted living facility. So, they have to meet those standards. The same would apply for those halfway houses. If they're going to call themselves an ASAM Level 3.5 halfway house, then they're going to have to license, whether they're going to get, get money or not. But if they're going to just have a landlord/tenant agreement with someone who's a recovering addict, that's not within our purview.
Okay. Follow-up? One last follow-up. During your licensing procedure, is there any portion of that that involves public comment?
No.
Okay.
There is public comment when we do rule changes around those, but there's not as far as licensing. I mean, I kind of want to relate this a little bit back to the Medicaid system in that it's, it's an entitlement, and so people are entitled to be able to make, do these things, and as long as they meet the standards that we have, then they're entitled to operate their business, if that makes sense. Now, from our licensing perspective, your, your perspective might be a little different than that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you for coming tonight, because we, we have been kind of wrestling with this, these questions. A lot of it had to do with zoning, and I know Lori Casey gave us her, what is allowed, you know, with zoning. And I do know that local governments can add, and they can kind of expand on state law, so I think that was one of the questions about a public hearing. So, once a license has been approved, who, where's the oversight come from after that to make sure that those people stay in compliance and meet the requirements for safety and health?
Generally speaking, on a new license, we issue a provisional, and then we will do a second follow-up inspection on that license within three to six months of issuing that license. After that, there's an annual inspection on everything that we license, and we will do complaint inspections on anyone. We're pretty, pretty on top of complaint inspections. If someone calls and has an issue, we're going to go and send people. I spend my licensing staff in numerous different areas. I've got about 20 of them who do the youth care and assisted livings, and they spend about half their time on complaint inspections, where somebody's called and said, this is a problem. We'll go find out. Sometimes it's a problem, sometimes it's not. Depends on how, you know, how it works out.
Okay. Thank you.
And glad to come up, Pam, by the way.
Okay.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive, Palmer. Thank you, Carter, for being here.
Attaboy, Jim.
So, as a point of clarification, your licensing is for the people that are running the house or the facility. And I'm going to follow this, because I'm going to give you two questions. I guess our concern mostly comes from the neighbors that are having to live next to these houses that are coming into their neighborhood. And as a point of clarification, your licensee department really has no jurisdiction over the neighbor complaints or anything, as long as they're compliant within the health and safety of the facility. Is this correct?
That sounds correct, yes. Unless there's a violation of the rules that we have, or their own policy and procedures, which could be reported to us by a neighbor, which we would then investigate. But no, we're not going to get into those issues, not as a state, no.
Follow-up?
Thank you, once again. So, I guess what, what brings you here is, we've been knocking this thing around quite a bit, but we've had people come in, and, you know, it's, I think it's five people unrelated can live in a house, and then there's eight people that can live unrelated in a house, and that is part of the licensing procedure. But the problem we're having is, realtors are listing houses for sale, and people want to buy them, and then they buy the house and sign the buy/sell agreement, and then they want to move five adult males or such, six adult males into these facilities, and the neighbors complain. So, we, as a group, one commissioner here, Mr. Mankins, has had quite a deal with this, so we've had people up here. So, what we're trying to distinguish is if she, we should have a, people that are going to move into these facilities, come be, do a zoning variance before they come in. Your department has nothing to do with any of that. As point of clarification, once again, you are just here to talk about the licensing of the facility that you are inspecting.
That, that is our perspective as a state of Montana, is we just do the licensing of the facility, the program, which sometimes can be an individual's program, but generally, they are, are programs or facilities that we're talking about here right now. I mean, there's, there's different types of things you license, it could be individuals, but for the purpose of this, yeah, we don't, we're not going to take a stance one way or the other, as a state of Montana on that.
Thank you, once again, Ms. Chief Executive, and thank you, Carter. So, I guess the last question is, is naturally, if people want to open a facility, and they know that the neighbors are going to squawk, they're not going to come before a local ordinance and try to get a zoning variance when they don't have to. You know, they don't have to get it, the state isn't going to regulate them to have to do that. So, it's mostly a volunteer thing for the county. And then if they happen to get caught running a facility, I guess they could report it to your department, and you could investigate, but you wouldn't actually be investigating the hassle to the neighbors. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Carter. I appreciate that.
We investigate unlicensed programs quite a bit, especially in the daycare world, and our only ability, if they're operating unlicensed, is to refer to the county attorney.
Commissioner Mankins.
So, as, kind of like a follow-up with everyone talking about this, as Mr. Carter has stated, that he doesn't have any jurisdiction over us if we decide to do this, and we're speaking for the people of our community. They can still go through the process with this conditional use permit through the state as they do, but as we are asking, and so are the residents of this community, are asking just to be aware of it and go through our own process. As we've all talked to afterwards and after listening to Mr. Carter, it has nothing really to do what we are trying to do here. He is a different entity. We are also a different entity, trying to provide something for everyone, through checks and balances. So, I do not see where, like, we're going anywhere further with, I mean, with Mr. Carter. I mean, I'm glad that Mr. Carter came. I haven't seen Mr. Carter in 15 years or better, but it's nice to see him in a different position. Yeah. Yeah, but, no, it's, it's great. But in the other hands, I mean, what Mr. Carter is saying is everything that we stated at the judiciary for the last six weeks.
Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Carter, for coming and, and giving us a little bit of insight into the state requirements. As, as a member of the Judiciary Committee, I think the, the reason for bringing Mr. Anderson here was to see if there were any sort of public process in your licensing procedures. I guess anybody from the judiciary can jump in and check and correct me if I'm wrong. So, hearing that there is none, but that can be added through the legislative process, I think that's where we're at with that. We do have the authority to add a conditional use permit to facilities like this, and that is what is at the core of the issue. All that being said, I have a couple of questions for you regarding policy and procedure adherence by these organizations. What types of things are in their policies and procedures? Are there things such as preserving the peace of the neighborhood, curfews? What types of things would be in a policy and procedure manual for a facility like this that would be of concern to the neighbors?
Well, there could be things in, in a policy and procedure related to curfews, related to access out into the community, depending on the level of care that you're talking about and the type of program that you're talking about. It could be things in their policy about the amount of supervision that would be required for people to do certain activities. So, again, because we have so many different types, it's hard for me to put it all into one category and say this is what it's going to look like or what we're going to review. We review them again for health and safety. If we don't feel like that that program's providing an adequate level of safety for the people of Montana, that would be for the residents of Montana, whether they're a next-door neighbor or across town, or the residents of that particular facility, then we would not issue that license, or we would require changes to their policy and procedures. procedures.
Okay.
Follow-up. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you. So, of the complaints that you see related to policy and procedure, can you tell me what the most common complaint is for one of these halfway houses?
Honestly, we don't get a lot of complaints about the halfway houses that we have out here, the substance abuse halfway houses and those types of complaints. We really honestly don't get many of those. And usually, they are going to be complaints from residents about the quality of care that they're receiving, whether it's going to be, you know, they don't like the food or they don't like the requirements that they have. Those types of things are more of the complaints that we would get in that area, not, I don't have my complaint log with me, but I can't off the top of my head even come up with a community complaint on a halfway house that I've had in the last year and a half. I mean, I've come with a bunch for nursing homes, assisted living hospitals, PRTFs, any other level of care you'd like to hear about, but that one, we just don't get a lot on. Plus, I mean, those are highly needed services, in my personal opinion, these substance abuse type programs, especially for, as we know, for the opioid and all that type of thing. So, we're hoping more people are doing those, although we'd like to see them do those in collaboration with their community members.
One more follow-up, if I may.
One more follow-up. Commissioner Shea.
Thank you. I agree that those services are sorely needed, especially in an area like Butte. Do you think that more public conversation would help people who are suffering with substance use disorder in their understanding, in them being understood?
I'm certain that any education we can do in the public to try to help them to understand the needs of these folks would be great. I'm not real sure how to actually do that, but I think we would help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Carter or Mr. Anderson?
Southern thing, we got three last names when I grew up, so, you know, it's...
Carter, how are you today?
Yeah, it's good to see you there, John.
Are you aware of any other communities that have to have these people or these entities go through another zoning requirement?
You know, I believe I've read that there is one other that does have one of those requirements. Kalispell, I believe, has some sort of zoning requirement, but I think I've read that through the newspaper and the articles about what's out there more so than from any other knowledge.
Okay, but that's the only one that you're aware of right now?
Once again, just from what I've read in the newspaper, yeah, that seems to be one that has one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, for being here tonight. Couple of questions for you. First off, how many of these licenses halfway houses do you know that are currently in the state, if you have a rough number?
Well, I don't have that with me, but I personally know of about 10 across the state, 10 or 12 that I could list off if I had to, but that'd be about it. There's probably more.
Okay, thank you. And then as a follow-up to that, how many other licenses are there for, say, daycare centers or these other daycare assisted living and other programs like this that you do offer licensure to?
Well, I can give you a quick breakdown, but it's 1,700 total, about 1,100 daycares across the state of Montana, 211 assisted living facilities, 72 different nursing homes, 45 critical access hospitals, nine acute care hospitals. So, there's quite a few. We do a lot with different licensing, so they're all over. I couldn't tell you how many. There's 200 and plus residential types of DD and mental health group homes across the state of Montana that are things like what Aware and BSW and people like that here in town do. So, there's about 200, plus two and plus of those across the state.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, again, for being here. I got another question for you. I think I probably know the answer, but while you're here, I'm going to ask. During your licensing, I guess your pre-preliminary licensing examination of the different, you know, groups, is there, do you have any, anything that says that one neighborhood doesn't get saturated with the whole big group? I mean, is that something that, let's say, you might have 10 halfway houses in three blocks, you know, because, you know, right now, we're having some of these, how people buying these homes, and they're turning them into, you know, residential areas or, you know, whatever. So, there's nothing out there that says that you can't have so many within the state of Montana?
No, we don't have any restrictions within our licensing requirements. Again, we're just looking at, do they meet the standards to provide a safe, quality environment for the people that they're going to serve, whatever the category may be?
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for coming. I've got a little bit different question, and I'm probably going to make a lot of mistakes while asking it.
Sure.
One of the concerns that was brought up at one of the judiciary meetings about the zoning ordinance we're looking at is that it would add a barrier to some, I'll say, foster care or adoption by relatives in just a small case, in where they have a critical situation, they need to get the children into a better home, they go into a relative. What kind of licensing and barriers paperwork is involved in doing that? Or is that under your perjury?
Actually, foster care is licensed by Child and Family Services Division, not by the Quality Assurance Division. I mean, I'm fairly familiar with the process, but we don't actually issue those licenses. They come, like I said, from Child and Family Services, and they even do the therapeutic foster care licensing, so, which is very different from, I mean, when you're talking about one or two kids versus eight adults, it's a very different world.
Commissioner Sorge.
I would just ask if, Lori, do you have anything you want to add?
Okay. Anything further for Mr. Anderson?
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Carter, thanks for coming. I just want to, I mean, the whole, our whole plan is here is, we keep mentioning daycares and nursing homes and whatnot. Our whole idea here is to be aware of the houses that are coming in our neighborhood. The one down the street from me, several people in my area approached me, "Hey, what's going on? What's going on in there?" I have no idea. I mean, I'm on the planning board, and I don't even know what these houses are going in. If you would think, and I'm a commissioner too, District 7, and you would think that I would know or have some insight. It's either I didn't read an email or I didn't pay attention, but however, God willing, I should know. Now that this has come up, all it is, is we're not trying to stop any of these homes from coming in. In my eyes, I feel like we want to obviously be aware, okay, due to the fact of safety, home values, we could go the whole, we could throw so many ways at it. So, when we're comparing it, what we're comparing to daycares, these aren't daycares, okay? These are not daycares, okay? These aren't foster homes. These are different types of housing for people that were, you know, whatever they have going on. And again, I'm also for the care and for the recovery, absolutely. So, I think we're kind of crisscrossing stuff between nursing homes and daycares. Like, obviously, that doesn't fall under the same situation of what Mr. Anderson looks at. I mean, I don't know, we got to get this out here that we're trying to protect our town, our community, the people. With that being said, we got to do what's right for what the people are asking for. With that being said, if there's no regulations on how many you have, there's not. I have them all over my area. They're popping up all over the place. That's great. They're fine now. I mean, heck, but, I mean, it is what it is. We don't know where they're at. We don't know where they're coming up. My next question is if these houses, if I go through the state and I want to open up a house, basically, that you can give me a license for, do you guys follow up on what licensing I would have to get in Silver Bowl County? Or can I just strictly go to you, get approved, and then I'm good? I can open, you approve me for my eight people to come into my house?
Yeah, well, you know, again, we're the state of Montana. Some things you have to go through the Secretary of State for, so you need a business license, right? So, you're going to have to do some things along those lines that aren't necessarily QAD. And I don't really know all of those things, other than we would check to make sure that you did have, we want to make sure you had your liability insurance. We want to make sure you have your workman's compensation. We check those types of things for, as any other business would, but there are licensing for other things that are within the state of Montana that are not QAD. Some of that kind of seems like where you're heading with some of this.
Well, something where, I go, you guys are in Helena, correct? Is that where your, where's your office at?
Helena.
So, you're in Helena. So, your office is in Helena.
Yeah.
I'm going to open up a treatment house, whatever you want to call it. I buy the house, I pay cash for it, nobody knows. I call you, I get it all approved through you. Are you checking anything, that I did anything through Silver Bowl County? Are you just giving me my license? Because in that case, then we would never know. I can go open up 20 of these houses.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a question.
Functionally, what you're saying is correct, that we only, we do the licensing. If they meet the licensing standards, we're going to license them. Some of you guys may know me from before, where we have opened up several group homes here in the state of Monta in Butte. I got one three doors from my own house, and we did community meetings, and we talked to people, and we let them know, and, you know, it's good business practice to do it that way, but we don't have a requirement that people do it that way, not within licensing.
Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thanks for your presentation. I think that, you know, I chair the Judiciary Committee, and I attended the meeting with the concerned citizens of the West Side that talked about the issue. You know, they want notification, obviously, but there appears to be a big loophole here that if you put five people in a house, you don't have to license it with the state. What's the county or the city's recourse? I mean, who would we talk to with the state of Montana, in your opinion, to resolve these loopholes? It seems that there's a disconnect between, is there really treatment happening at these facilities or care, or is it a business opportunity where somebody buys a house in a neighborhood for $70,000 and puts five or six individuals in the home at $500 or $600 a month? It seems that there are people that are capturing business ideas and kind of sweeping it under the umbrella that they're providing services to the individuals that live there, whether or not that's true. And it seems that, in your department, that you don't really have any oversight, especially if we don't know about it, you wouldn't know about it if they don't license it, so...
Again, if it's reported to us, we could go out and inspect and see what they're doing and see if they're required to have a license. If they are required and don't, then we would refer to, we'd tell them they have to get one, and we'd make them go through the process, possibly even shut them down to start with, right there to say, "You have to have a license." But if we don't have a reason to have them have a license, then it's outside of my purview.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just a follow-up to Commissioner O'Neil. To me, if you don't know that that's going on in your neighborhood, that's a good thing, because that means that maybe things are being followed the way they should be done. So, that's the way I would look at that one. As far as knowing what is going on in everybody's houses, that's a privacy thing that you wouldn't walk up to anybody and say, "What is going on in your house? I need to know because I'm the Commissioner of District 3." So, I would, I would question that a little bit.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chief Executive. So, I can, I didn't, don't want to get into debate here. For that, on the record, the people that are in the one currently now from my house, prior to the first one that was there, that was absolutely terrible, the police were there every night, and now the people manage it now, are always doing a way better job, but it was every single night, and my three-year-old son at the time says, "Hey, Daddy, that's where the cops are at every day." So, I mean, so, I mean, nobody wants that in their neighborhood. I mean, if that's what we think treatment is, that's not. I mean, that's terrible. For, I mean, I have one of the guys in the one now, he's my buddy, so we talk quite often. So, he tells me what's going on in the house, Commissioner Morgan, so I just want to, just for the record, I am for all the treatment I am for, but, I mean, we got to do it right. Obviously, we're not doing it correct how we're doing it now. We can get these through how we can. I mean, if we really want every single house, and look at the market view, we can pick up houses for really good prices, and we can throw all kinds of stuff, and make, we say it's not about money, but, I mean, it's partially about money. It's a great business plan to go buy these and get them registered and have clients, whoever you want to call them, and pay your payments for you. It's a great deal. All right, hey, the town, our people of Butte are asking us to do something for this, to do something, so we got to do something. That's where I'm at. Thank you for letting me come.
Commissioner Anderson.
Once again, thank you, and just one last question, real quick. Let's say I purchase a house over here on the, anywhere, say, a five-bedroom, two-bathroom house. How many individuals am I going to be allowed to house in that?
Depends on the service that you're talking about. Generally speaking, the max would be about eight, although there is some services that you could run 50 square feet per resident, per bedroom, so if you had a 100-square-foot bedroom, you could have two residents in there in a five-bedroom house, you could do 10. It would then, it would, again, depend on what you wanted a license for, but in these halfway house types of scenarios, I think you're at a max of about eight.
About eight? And say, an average house is probably closer to one bath or two bathroom, three-bedroom, so that'd drop you down to about four to six?
Depending on the level, we'd require X number of bathrooms and showers per resident, so, say, at least one bathroom for four residents. We'd also be gender-specific in what we're licensing in different areas, so depending on, there needs to be separation. You can license for both male and female at the same time, you just have to have some separation, and you have to have some policy around that, if you're going to do it that way.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I will tell you guys, if anybody wants a list of everything that we do license that's in there, you just give me an email, and I can throw you together a real quick list of everything that is licensed in Silver Bowl County, if it would be helpful for you guys. Be glad to zip that out to you real quick.
Commissioner Fisher.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Chief Executive. Carter, thank you. Just end it. It appears to me that you can do whatever we want locally, but if you really want to change the things that you guys are talking about doing, it's a legislative issue, it's a state legislative issue, and it's something you're going to have to talk to your legislature about and go over there and lobby them and get the bill, get a bill on the table and get it passed, because it's a statewide deal, and we're not dealing with it alone. So, I mean, if you've got issues and you think it's something you want to take to legislature, this is time to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, they're coming back for a week, Jim, so, you get a lot done there.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for taking your time to come over and answer questions.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
And next, we'll move on to Section 1 Consent Agenda, A. 1 through 4 and B. 1 through 29. Are there any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Let's see where it's at. I'd like to make a friendly amendment on item number nine in the consent agenda, 19-581. Pat C. Coats, property specialist, requesting council commissioner's approval of the tax deed. Public auction be held on February 5th. That should be 2020 and not 2019, and I've already talked to Barb, and she's going to change it so the next agenda that we have would be corrected. Thank you.
Any segregations? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. What's the agenda tonight? I have a few of them, so I would like to segregate 19-579.
Say the number.
Say the number. I don't remember.
Number seven. I would also like to segregate number 19, or 19-588, which is number 16. 19-600.
Number 27?
And 19-602, number 27, I believe. No, it's not 27. It's 29.
Any further segregation? Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate number 6. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate number 6, 19-578, number 11, 19-583, and number 17, 19-589.
Anybody want to get the last one? Okay. Commissioner Morgan.
You got my pen here. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioners, please check my segregations. I would make a motion that we approve Section 1, the consent agenda, A. The committee reports 1 through 4, B. The communications 1 through 29, with the exclusions of number 6, 19-578, number 7, 19-579, number 10, 19-582, number 11, 19-583, number 16, 19-588, number 17, 19-589, number 27, 19-600, and number 29, 19-602.
Second.
With the amendment on number...
Yeah.
Whatever it was. Okay. So we have a motion made in second to approve the consent agenda, A. 1 through 4, and B. 1 through 29, exclusive of number 6, 7, 10, 11, 16, 17, 27, and 29. Is there anything on the question? Although, would everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. So first, we'll go to number 6, Communication number 19-578. Gary Rundle, citizen, requesting council of commissioners consider allowing the purchasing of the property located at 1820 banks. I wish to redeem the property from the Butte-Silver Bow before the tax sale in February. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Originally, I referred this to land sales, which wasn't the appropriate location. But further looking into it, there's a few things that Lori Baker and your county attorney, Joyce, would like to look into. So at this time, I would just make a motion that we hold Communication 19-578 in the committee of the whole.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to hold Communication 19-578 in the committee of the whole. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Next is number 7, Communication 19-579. Mary McCormick, historic preservation officer, requesting council of commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign a Montana state historic preservation shipo revitalization, Montana rural heritage grant application. Assistant Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. As we go back to about a five-year history on the caretaker's house at the Basin Creek Reservoir, I think Matt could probably relate to this. He was probably chief executive when we started this years ago. The communication, I have no trouble with. The issue I have trouble with in the communication is with the letter, where we're gonna submit for $100,000 grant, which I think is great. I hope they get $100,000 to fix it up. The problem I have is the matching funds required that will consist of 67,000 and 10,000 for Butte citizens for preservation revitalization, 37,000 for the insurance, and then 11,000 for historical preservation grant from SARD, that's still pending, 8,000 from something else, and 10,000 HPO labor. I just think that's too many contingencies to approve a deal where we don't even know if we're gonna get the grant yet. I mean, we're asking to get a grant for $100,000 to fix up a house that, seven years ago, we almost tore down. And now they've been out there working and fixing it up. So I have nothing against this communication, but I would like to limit it down to just the last line, where it says, "At this time, the HPO requests council allow the office to pursue revitalizing Montana rural heritage grant funds in the amount of $100,000." I just don't think we should stick our neck out right now for all this other money until we find out, because, as you know, once we approve these communications, and we don't get the $100,000 grant, there's gonna be some issues about, how are we gonna fix that house? You guys said we're gonna fix it. So, I mean, I would like to make a motion at this time that we approve this communication without all the contingencies that, you know, we just approved. That we will look at this again when we get the $100,000 grant. I don't like the idea of all this money hanging out there, the matching funds, and, you know, the insurance money's been sitting in an account now for probably two years, three years, and, you know, the SARD grant, it isn't in there yet. So, I mean, that is a motion I would make, is to approve Communication 19-579 without all the contingencies, to just wait and see if we get the $100,000 grant. Thank you.
Motion dies for the lack of a second. Oh, who seconded it? Commissioner Manken seconded it. Commissioner Shaw.
On the question? Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to ask Mary McCormick to come up to the podium. This is her communication. I think we should give her the opportunity to explain why there are contingencies and just help support her request.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive and council of commissioners, and Cindy Shaw. I'd just like to say they're not contingencies. The Butte CPR, a couple of years ago, donated, made an offer to donate $10,000 to a successful grant to do rehabilitation on the caretaker's house. That's a solid commitment that they definitely will fulfill if this grant comes along. The SARD grant, we wrote a SARD grant to put in new windows, because many of the windows were broken out. I received unofficial notice from the SARD, Julia Crane, that that grant had been approved by the SARD board. There, we haven't received final notice yet, because there was other grants that they were requesting that the grantees come in and give presentations. But they found our grant request to be a solid request, and in fact, I was told it was voted as one or two of the highest ranking grants. And so I feel very confident that we're gonna get that money. So we're just adding that in to this, to this match. I certainly have no problem with your motion. I think it's, you know, fine, we just included what all the match would be in there, just so that you would know. But it doesn't necessarily have to be in there for this commission, the council, to approve Mr. Palmer to sign a grant application for $100,000.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just to follow up, Commissioner Fisher, I'm looking for some input. Your motion stated to concur with this request without the contingencies. So if that were the case, and the contingencies fall through, Butte-Silver Bow would be on the hook for the matching funds, if it's worded that way. So it should be that, to approve with the contingencies, so that if some of the funding falls out, then Butte-Silver Bow is not on the hook for the matching fund. Am I messed up on that?
Could I address that?
Could I just clarify that this is just the application to apply for the grant, and once that we would still have to approve
Yeah.
me to sign the actual grant, once it was accepted, approved by the Historic Preservation Commission in Helena, the state. And then, if that happened, everything would be in place at that time, and if it wasn't, you could not authorize me to sign it at the time. This is just the application.
But Commissioner, or Chief Executive Palmer, I think it'd be more prudent to say "with the contingencies," because then that would be a reason to not sign the grant.
Could be true, yeah. But there could be another way to get the money between now and then, too, if it happened. But it's up to you, however you want to do it. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. So I guess what I'll... I agree with that I might have misstated that, but what I'm stating is, I think it'd be okay for the chief executive to sign to apply for the grant. But I don't think we should have all this other things in there until we see if we get the grant. You know, that's all I'm saying, is that we've got a lot of hanging fringe edges there if we don't get the grant. We're kind of locking ourselves into, you know, coming up with money to rebuild the house.
Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In front of us, we don't have the actual grant application, so we don't know what the required dollar-for-dollar match is in the grant. I mean, is it a one-for-one? Is it a two-for-one? Is it a four-for-one? Because if it's like a match-for-match, then we need to have the contingencies in. And I would agree with, fully with Commissioner Morgan, that if we're gonna apply for a grant, we need to show them that we are gonna match their required match, or that we won't even be considered for the grant.
Mary, you want to explain?
They call it a 60-40 match, which is a little confusing. So if they give $60, for every $60 they give, you give 40. So if they're giving us $100,000, we have to have a 66, approximately, $66,000, $67,000 match. We have a solid $38,900, $38,900 in the insurance payment that we received for damages to that house. We have a solid $10,000 commitment from Butte CPR. We have... We just have not received the official letter of notification, but I have been notified that we have been approved for $11,000 in a SARD grant. They also allow some in-kind donation, and that would be, I figure, $9,000 to $10,000 of work for me to do. And so those aren't contingencies, they are solid, they are solid match that we have put together.
Follow-up, Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. So it'd make complete sense for Butte-Silver Bow to list all of the items that we have solid, that we're gonna put into the project, so that we strengthen our application, as opposed to leaving them out and saying that we're gonna apply for $100,000. And then when our competing projects list their match requirements, we're gonna get tossed before we even get through round one. So I would, I would make a motion, a substitute motion, that we concur with the original recommendation to concur and place on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to concur and place the communication on file. Is there anything on this question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There's 11 yea, 1 nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll vote at number 10, Communication 19-582. Ed Vanderob, Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, requesting council of commissioners to invite a Montana Department of, or DPHHH, toxicologist
Yes.
to give a presentation relative to the hazardous risks to a human health of heavy metals contaminants present in the Butte-Silver Bow community. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. I think Mr. Vanderob made a very strong point. We've all seen recent news reports of the levels of toxicology in new barns and everything, and it would be, I think, a good idea for this body to understand this. I'm pretty sure in a week's time, we could do it, or we could do it now and just get it out of the way. So at this time, I'd make a motion to concur with Communication 19-582, and hold this until such time as we hear back from the body and the presentation is given.
Refer back to the committee of the whole, as it says.
I make a motion to hold it in the committee of the whole, but to put forth that invitation as soon as possible.
Second.
Motion dies for the lack of a second. I'll second. Or was there a second? Cindy did? Okay.
Yes.
Anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher?
I think that Mr. Anderson's communication wanted this be acted upon at this time, it sounded like to me, because that's what Mr. Vanderob requested. So I'm a little confused about the second, whether Cindy understood that, because he didn't want to refer this to committee of the whole. He wanted this be acted on tonight, put on file, I believe.
What my motion was, is to extend an invitation to the Montana Department and get the toxicologist to give a report as soon as possible, but to hold this communication until such time as that report is given.
That's right.
We'd have to keep it open for that report to be given at a later date.
I stand with my second.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just on the question, just as a comment, my plan for this communication with holding it in committee of the whole was I actually sent Ms. Sullivan an email prior to tonight's meeting, that I wanted to talk to her and try to get our ducks in a row with who to even contact at this stage, or see what the best way to schedule them was. So I was gonna work on that for the upcoming week, and then come back to you guys next week. So that's where I was at. I see where Mr. Anderson is at, but right now, we're a little premature on how to get ahold of the state, so...
Anything further on the question? Everyone please vote. Oh, Commissioner Manken's.
So before we vote on this, then who's responsible of putting that forward, seeing that Mr. Morgan... Okay.
Commissioner, it's what's asking, the council.
Mr. Chief Executive, I was hoping to have Ms. Sullivan assist me with that, hence why I was going to go to her as a resource.
Okay. Everyone understand? Anything further on the question? Everyone please vote. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are 11 yea, 1 nay.
Motion carries. Number 11, Communication 19-583. James Manning, Greenway Service District Chairperson, requesting council of commissioners approve to purchase real property for the Silver Bow Creek-Greenway project. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I segregated this, because I originally put this to refer to land sales, and that is not the appropriate place. It's James Manning requesting to purchase property to keep the Greenway Trail project going, and I did have a conversation with Ms. Skookarood. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that we concur with Communication 19-583 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to concur in the requesting Communication 19-583 and place the communication on file. On the question, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I was wondering if anybody had any idea what the dollar amount was for 130 acres being purchased, and if it's coming out of the restoration funds, super fund restoration funds.
Dory was here. Is she still there? That's it. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Commissioner Fisher, I'm on the Greenway Board. I can't tell you the amount of the purchase, but it is coming out of the Greenway budget, and so it isn't coming out of our general fund or anything like that. It is out of the restoration dollars. The property was purchased, or the agreement was put together by having an independent appraisal of the property by an appraiser called Joki, and he's done a lot of other Greenway-type properties. So I... So I, I can't, I can't tell you what the amount was right off the top of my head, so.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
And a clarification, we're going to refer this not to the land sales, to who?
We wish to concur and place on file.
Place on file.
Thank you.
Anything further on the question, Commissioner Morgan?
Just as a clarification for Commissioner Fisher, it is appraised, so they, they do only purchase it for the appraised value, and it goes through that whole process, so.
Further? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Is this the property we talked about some time ago out there at Fairmont with the Petersons that were here in our audience? Different piece of property? Thank you.
Will everyone please vote? Oh, hold on. Commissioner Olson?
The, the property in question is the Yuland property, and it's near the, it's by Ramsey, and. But, by the Greenway. But it's, it's not the, it's not the property near Fairmont, which is the one we had before. This is a purchase from, from Yuland's.
Everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are twelve yays and zero nays.
Motion carries. Next, Communication nineteen-five-eight-eight. Pat Kanin, Public Works Senior Operations Engineer, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign the Treasure State Endowment Program Grant Agreement for the Metro Division. Commissioner Fisher?
Once again, thank you, Chief Executive. I probably could get this question answered by Mr. Kanin. I see it was like three hundred and forty-some thousand dollars, and it's in the 2020 budget. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
So is that the budget process we're in now, or will that be the next, the 2021 budget?
Commissioner Fisher, Chief Executive, members of the council. Jim, this money was approved in the 2017 legislature, and it was pulled out because of the fires of 2017. Then we recently got it put back in. So this would go to jobs to rehabilitate and replace the sanitary systems along Waukesha and Empire Streets, and most of that's already designed, and we would do it this coming year.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. So we will be matching the three hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars, or two thou, yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, Pat, thank you, Chief Executive. With that being said, I would make a motion that we concur and place on file Communication nineteen-five-eight-nine. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to concur in requesting Communication nineteen-five-eight-nine and place the communication on file? Five-eight-eight. Nope, five-eight-eight. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are twelve yays and zero nays.
Motion carries. Next, Communication number seventeen, nineteen-five-eight-nine. Pat Kanin, Public Works Senior Operations Engineer, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign the wheel loader agreement for the landfill. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Issue that, that is on this communication is the letter asked for that caption for the wheel loader agreement for the landfill, that was the very last paragraph. But in fact, this communication deals with the TSEP grant agreement for the Water Division. So I just wanted to clarify that caption should read, "Pat Kanin, Public Works Senior Operations Engineer, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign the TSEP grant agreement for the Water Division Plan Upgrade." I don't know if Mr. Kanin has anything to, to say on that, but I would just make a motion that we concur and place on file Communication nineteen-five-eight-nine.
Second.
Motion made in second to concur in the request and place it on file. Pat, do you have anything to say?
Commissioner Morgan, Chief Executive, members of the council. John, you passed the test. I was checking you guys to make sure you're reading what I'm putting out there. And I, I accidentally left, this is a template we use almost every week, and I forgot to scratch that. That last sentence should read, "We are asking council to approve the, approve and authorize the chief executive to sign contract number MT-TSEP-PL-21-182." And that is, that grant would help us to update our master plan for our water system, and TSEP would give us fifteen thousand dollars, and we're putting in sixty thousand dollars. And that item will actually go out to bid later this year, or excuse me, early next year, and it, it could come in higher than that.
Everyone understand the change in the motion or in the title? Everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote?
We have twelve yay and zero nay.
Okay, motion carries. Next, we'll go to twenty-seven, I believe it was, yeah. Communication nineteen-six-hundred. Karen Sullivan, Health Officer, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign the amended contract between the Health Department, HB, HIV Early Intervention Services, direct award from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. This communication I segregated because there's a clause in there, amendment says it adds a syringe service program. And I just wanted Karen to clarify a little bit about the syringe service program, because in the previous communication, nineteen-five-ninety-nine submitted by Ms. Sullivan, also said something about a syringe services program. I just want a little clarification that this isn't something besides HIV that we're, you know, handed needles to, you know, drug addicts or something like that. Thank you.
Chief Executive Palmer, Commissioner Fisher, I would like to bring forward Tina Randall, who is the Director of our Community Health Division. Thank you.
Tina, where is yours?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of council, Commissioner Fisher. Number twenty-six, Communication nineteen-five-nine-nine. You referenced, also mentioned, syringe services. That's an existing contract that we have, so the terms of that contract haven't changed, it's exactly the same. The contract that did change the amended is the twenty-seven, which is the nineteen-six-hundred. And the scope of services for this contract did change to include the addition of providing syringe services in the community of Butte Silver Bow. Previously, our work in the syringe services was the support of a nonprofit organization that provided syringe exchange services. We, through the HIV Prevention Grant, which is the fifteen-nine-nine, we provided staff time to do rapid HIV and hepatitis C testing at the syringe exchange service. Additionally, we disposed of the needles through our medical waste contract. Now, our HIV Early Intervention Services Grant, which is the nineteen-six-hundred, which is the amendment, does change how the syringe program in Butte Silver Bow County will work. The nonprofit is no longer in existence. They dissolved probably a little over a year ago. So as of right now, there are, there isn't a functioning syringe service program in Butte Silver Bow. So the reason that it's part of our HIV contract is because syringe service programs are a public health intervention. And thank you for asking the question, because it's a great opportunity to educate why it is a public health program, why it's a benefit to our community. Everything we do at the Health Department is based on science and evidence. So this is coming from our federal partners who are studying the data, they have the evidence to back it up. Syringe service programs increase entry into, into substance use treatment for the utilizers of the exchange program. People who inject drugs that utilize a syringe program are five times more likely to enter treatment than if they were not utilizing the services. Syringe service programs reduce needle stick injuries because we are properly disposing of the needles, they aren't being, you know, thrown about in the community. They help decrease the spread of communicable disease, and that is through providing sterile needles to people who inject drugs so that they aren't sharing their needles. They, syringe service programs actually are shown to reduce overdose deaths, because along with the, as part of the syringe service program, the participants receive education. The education is, you know, how to inject as safely as possible, how not to spread disease, why you don't want to share your needles, what to do in the, in the case of an overdose. Some of the syringe service programs in the state, some of our partners provide naloxone to the utilizers of the service. So in the event of an overdose, they have those measures to prevent that overdose from resulting in a death. Syringe service programs also save money. Healthcare dollars are saved by preventing infections, with the estimated lifetime cost of treating one person living with HIV is over four hundred thousand dollars. Some information specific to our community, when the nonprofit was here providing services, they had approximately three hundred registered users. So it is a service that's needed in our community. The reason that our contract was modified was because the state has been looking at the data for Butte Silver Bow as far as communicable disease, specific to HIV and hepatitis C, and they've identified us as an area that could be at potential risk of outbreak. So that's why it is now part of our contract, so that we can try to prevent any, any such outbreak. During this fiscal year, since July, just in our Health Department rapid testing, we have identified one HIV-positive individual and eighteen positive hepatitis C individuals, all linked to injection drug use. Some had other factors, other high-risk factors that went along with the injection drug use, but they all have a history of injection drug use or are current injection drug users. So these are the folks in our community that we want to provide this service to.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Yeah. I guess that answered my question. I just, I'm a little, I'm a little undecided on the issue, and I'm not sure. I mean, I can understand your point, they're getting educated, but are we aiding and abetting drug users that are shooting needles at themselves? I mean, you know, it's, it's a tough, I, I'm just not certain on this one. It's kind of throwing me a curve, and that's when I read it, that's what I thought it was. So.
Can I add, I did miss.
If you would, please.
One important point that I have on my fact sheet, that came directly from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control. Evidence has shown that syringe service programs don't increase drug use, and they don't increase crime. People are going to inject drugs if that's what they choose to do. We're giving them a means to do it more safely and to keep our community safer in the process.
Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. As a front, I will point out a situation that happened the other day. One of the police officers here in town, they had to go into an apartment that was abandoned that had numerous, numerous drugs and needles. He came in with two coffee cans into the ER to dispose of these needles safely. They, I, I've seen them on walks through uptown, I've seen them laying around the hospital. I came into, just on rounds through the hospital, what I do, I found half a dozen needles just laying in the tissue box. So, you know, if people have a safe place to dispose these, I think it's a very good idea. Having an accidental needle prick with somebody with HIV or hepatitis C would be a very bad situation.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I have no problem with the disposing them, it's providing them with new clean needles. That's where I, that's where I'm fascinated on the issue. I know this might be out of protocol and procedure, but our fellow Commissioner Michelle Shea works in the medical field probably as much as any of the sitting at this board. Michelle, if you would just weigh in a little for me, and I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I agree that we need syringe services in this town. It's not just that, we're not just giving drug users needles. And a drug user is not your stereotypical thing that you're seeing. We have drug users working in restaurants. We have drug users working in mechanics areas. We have our police responding to people who are using drugs. If those people are disease-free, as we contact them, the public at large is safer. So as much as it sounds and seems counterintuitive, I have seen the data on this, and everything that Ms. Randall is saying is true.
Commissioner Shaw. Shea, Shaw.
The other Shea, the Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'm on the Board of Health, and we did have a long discussion about this, and, you know, there was that knee-jerk reaction, which is natural. But we provide condoms, come in the front door, and, you know, I mean, we're not saying you should go out and have unprotected sex or sex at all, probably, but it, it doesn't encourage anything, it is a preventive measure. The other, the other part of the, the needle portion of it was safety, security for your own people, you know, and the, and the grounds. And I know that that is being addressed, and that we have, that is right at the very front burner of this whole process, is that the, the premises and the people in the premises and around it are safe. So I, I just, like I said, I compare it with giving out condoms, so, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Karen, for your input, Michelle. With that being said, I'm still a little fascinated, but I will make a motion that we concur and place on file Communication nineteen-six-hundred.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to concur in the requesting Communication nineteen-six-hundred. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will clerk please record the vote?
There are twelve yay and zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to twenty-nine, Communication nineteen-six-zero-nine, six-zero-two. Can't get my glasses on. John Sesso, Super Fund Coordinator, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the chief executive to sign the Water Service Agreement with Montana Resources to use water resources from the Silver Lake Water System. Commissioner Fisher?
Once again, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I segregated this communication to hopefully get a response from maybe Mr. Sesso and Mark Thompson as to what was said by a few of the other people tonight, Sister Mary Jo and the Coalition from Missoula and a few of these. I, I think that, you know, this is important information to reevaluate, so if I could call on Mr. Sesso or Mr. Thompson, thank you.
Mr. Sesso and Mr. Thompson. John, go first.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, I, I don't know really what the specific question might be. My response to the input we received this evening is, is, is not change the recommendation to move forward. I would, I would say that the comments we've received over the last week regarding the relationship between bringing the water to Butte and the water that might be available for Warm Springs Creek on the other side. for Warm Springs Creek on the other side, I think is a, is a non-issue. When we got the system in 2000, or 1997, we, we put together and hired somebody to give us a real thorough analysis of the capacity of the system. And, you know, there's some 55 million gallons a day that this system can produce. We don't use anywhere near that amount yet. The day comes when we're using that amount of water, yeah, then we're going to have some conflicts between our industrial use and in-stream flow uses. But for now, I would submit to you that there's plenty of water to deal with the obligations under this Water Service Agreement. And there's going to be plenty of water to deal with the in-stream flow needs on Warm Springs Creek and ultimately the Clark Fork River. The second thing I would say about that is there's a, going to be a pretty robust process. If you look at the Water Service Agreement and it provides for the funding to go through the change authorization process with the DNRC and the Water Court. And in that process, everybody who believes that they're impacted will have the right to object. And it's in that process where we're going to get specific in terms of the exact water rights we're going to bring to town versus the water rights that are used on Warm Springs Creek today and the water that we contracted with the state on the two pilot projects. That's really technical stuff. There's going to be a process. And I, I committed earlier today and I'll, I'll commit on the record that Butte Silver Bow is certainly willing to engage all the stakeholders in that process. The last thing we want to do is propose a, a change to the Water Court and then get, you know, a bunch of objectors come in the room because A, they don't understand what we're doing and they have not gotten the detail associated with which specific water rights we're talking about. If we were to bring all direct flow rights to make up the 4 million gallons we're going to get and bring to town, yeah, there, there could be adverse effects on Warm Springs Creek, but that, that's not what we're going to do. It's going to be a combination of, of direct flow rights and stored water. And I would submit again that there's plenty of water to take care of what we're going to do under this pilot project, this four-year project, and there's enough water to continue to serve the in-stream flow needs downstream. So there's a process for that. We're going to go through the process and I think it's in our interest as the owner in preparing that change authorization to the court that we do get all the stakeholders in a room and explain specifically what our proposal is, get their input and adjust it as necessary to make sure that all users and all stakeholders up and down the, the Upper Clark Fork Drainage are served by this tremendous resource that is the Silver Lake System. As far as the, um, I, I think that there were a few, a couple of folks that were endorsing the program. And then Sister was wanting to make sure we are getting fair value for the resource, the 178,000. And I, I would say this, that this is really a placeholder. This is a four-year deal. None of the current customers of our Silver Lake Water System pay for the water. They pay a hookup fee at the beginning and then they pay a portion of the operation and maintenance to deliver that water to them based on their allocated share, amount that they get. So this is our first foray into actually trying to establish a value of the water resource in addition to the, the operation and maintenance costs and the capital costs. So we, we are, I believe, being very good stewards of the system in trying to set a bar. The agreement is very clear that we've set the bar for 178,000 for four years, 712,000 for the four-year period. All that money is going into the capital improvements account. It also is very specific that MR will be paying all the pumping costs and the operation and maintenance costs, which means the current users of the system who pay their operation and maintenance costs, we get to divert that money for these four years into the capital improvements program. So MR is paying the cost of the change authorization, which will be expensive. I mean, the legal cost to do a change authorization of this, of this magnitude is, is going to cost us quite a bit of money. And they're going to pay the 300,000 for the hookup fee, they're going to pay the, all the pumping costs which allow us to collect the, the monies into the capital improvements cost, they're going to pay the operation and maintenance costs, and on top of that, they're going to pay this 178,000 as a first attempt to try to establish the value of the resource so that when the additional users come forward, NRD or the Clark Fork Coalition or anybody else who wants to do business with Butte Silver Bow for in-stream flow, they'll have to pay their fair share of the operation and maintenance and capital costs and they'll have to pay a, a water resource value cost. So the 178, as I tried to explain last time, perhaps not a very good job, was based on a study we did a couple of winters ago to try to move us towards a utility-based system for the water system. And we canvassed several other water systems that are on a utility basis and how they value water. We also, in so doing, we're trying to figure out how to actually set it up as a utility. But we earned, we learned some good information about how to value water and we have a value of our own in the cost to deliver a million gallons from our, our, our water system, our drinking water system. And so we think the 178, in addition to all the other costs that MR is paying under this agreement, is a good starting point. And if we find after the four-year period that we shorted ourselves on what we think the water and its value is, then we'll learn that lesson for the next and, and, and the subsequent users of the system. So I think we're, we, we, we had a lot of Q and A over, over the week. People called, asked us questions. We, I think answered them pretty well. I think that we're in pretty good shape with respect to how we've set the bar for the costs, the value of the resource. And, you know, like, I, I, like I said, I think it's still worthy of your consideration and your approval to, to move forward with it this evening.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thanks, John. I, we were at a CTEC meeting, there were five of us, commissioners there last night, and it was interesting to hear the public's comments and some, and in some ways their lack of understanding. So I think that's really important that we can try to address those things. So like Chief Executive Palmer said, it's an experiment or it's a proving ground of sorts to see how it would work, the, the outcome, and I think the assets and the resources are going to be a good thing. But why four years? Why would we not have chosen maybe a two-year time, you know, after two years decide how it's working? I mean, four years just sounds like, doesn't sound like much when you're running for office, but trust me, four years is, is a long time. And I just wondered if there was some reason for that term.
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner Shaw, the, the, we, I guess one way to say it, we, we needed to make it worth our while. I mean, this change authorization process, for starters, is going to probably take about a year before we're even going to have the authority to use the extra 4 million gallons. And, you know, we're charging MR a $300,000 hookup fee and to only have given them one year's use for the, for the extra 4 million gallons was seen as, as sort of not viable in, in the sense that we, we needed a particular period of time to see, as we mentioned last week, we're going to learn quite a bit about what the value of bringing this water to Butte to sustain flows in Black Tail and Silver Bow Creek are. The, the temperature stuff that was mentioned, the, the flows, the relationship between the flows and our metro system, the relationship from the flows and all this other water that we hope is going to be discharged, clean water, from the filtration plant from the Berkeley. So we, we felt that four years was a, a good window to really give ourselves a chance to get real intelligence out of the pilot and, you know, was sort of in sync with the amount of money that MR was going to invest in this endeavor. And we just came to that, that conclusion.
Just one follow-up.
Follow-up, Commissioner Shaw.
So other people, I think REC uses Silver, Silver Lake water currently and maybe some others in Connections. Is there any future thought that, you know, if we do put a value on the resource, like we're talking about doing a, a base value, if that might, you know, we can go, go back and possibly charge others that are using the water or just for future use? I mean, I don't, don't mean to be stingy about it, but, you know.
John. Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, you know, REC was sort of a charter member of the club. When, when we acquired the Silver Lake System in 1996, you know, through the, the settlement of the class action lawsuit, the industrial development of, of the Tiffid area and the Connections Park was just coming of age. And we had already secured ASME at the time and now REC Silicon as our tenant. And they needed water. And, you know, for all intents and purposes, we marketed the, the industrial park as having water. And it was time to put up our obligations when they came to town. And so we actually used, when we made those first 13 million dollars in, in capital improvements, when we took over the system in 96, 97, half of that money came from the increment that ASME was going to pay in their taxes. So I consider, and they, and they, of course, got 3.68 million, you can see on Exhibit A of the agreement, they got rights to 3.68 million gallons of water per day. They've been paying their share of operation and maintenance costs for 23 years now on the basis of that allocation, but really they only use about a million gallons a day. They, they only use about a third of their allocated share, but they've never complained about paying their share based on their 3.6 million, 6 million gallons per day allocation. So whether we would go back, that, that's what I was mentioning earlier about our, when Dave Schills was running the show in Public Works, the, he commissioned that study to, to, to see if it was viable to convert the Silver Lake Water System to a regular utility where, you know, you pay your rates and out of those rates, we pay for all the operation maintenance and capital improvements. Well, you know, at the end of the day, REC Silicon, if we went to a utility, would pay less because if you, you use a, if you were set up as a utility, it's all based on use, not on allocation. And so, you know, the charter members of, of Water Service Agreements from 1997, REC, the irrigators and, and Montana Resources for the mine operation, you know, it, it might be a difficult hustle to, to, to get them on a, where they're paying for the, for the, for the value of the water in addition to the cost of O and M and, and capital improvements. So that, that's to be determined as, as we move forward, but it's, it's, it's fairly complicated because we're, we're running the system on these Water Service Agreements as opposed to like a typical utility that are...
Commissioner Ferguson.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Sesso. I guess I don't really have a question, but just a comment that I think I, I agree with the sister on the fact that as we move forward and establish these guidelines, that maybe we should consider having a Silver Lake Water Board that could present to this council what they find after their meetings and just something to consider, you know, not, not right now, but it might be a good idea to, then we can set the rates and, and hatch it all out and so we're not doing this every single time someone comes on board.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thanks, Chief. John, just a quick question for you. So currently MR pays 238,000 for the current water that they receive, correct? Is that, they still pay, it's 238,000 per year? Is that right?
Correct.
So then they'll pay, they're going to pay an additional 178,000 for four years on top of the 238, correct?
Correct.
And then they're also throwing in 300 grand for the hookup?
Correct.
Okay, so that, I mean, just those numbers are, it's 1 million, it's over a million dollars for the, basically that four years of the, of the water they're getting. So when we look at just the 178 as per year, I mean, don't, don't forget the, the 300 and don't forget the 238 that they're already paying, so. Oh, and, and thank you, they're paying for the legal costs, they're paying for all that stuff. So I'm just, I'm just, I don't want us to forget about them costs. And just one more follow-up is a question to you, John. When that water comes up and we start putting it back where we're going to put it, and if someone mentioned tonight about if it were to mess something up going downstream, is Butte Silver Bow responsible for that?
John, Chief, you know, I, I guess I, I was trying to pay attention. I, I mean, as far as messing something up downstream, I mean, there's a couple of, of Where we're going to put it, at least until the corridor gets cleaned up the way we want it through the remedial action, is at the confluence. It's at the confluence of Black Tail and Silver Bow. So really, the, the water is going to impact the flows in Silver Bow Creek essentially from Montana Street points west. Now, we know that during low flows, the, the lack of, the, the warmer water has an adverse impact on, 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 on the fishery and the microorganisms. We know that low flows, as they relate to our discharge, you've got to remember that the metro plant discharges into Silver Bow Creek west of, of, of Montana Street. And so, you know, I, I don't really anticipate that having more water and a more sustainable flow on Silver Bow Creek is going to be a problem. Certainly the irrigators who have made their living stealing water out of Silver Bow Creek on water rights they own and maybe don't own, they're going to love the extra water. We're going to try to make sure that the extra water is staying in the, in Silver Bow Creek, uh, uh, all the way to the ponds. And, and I see only benefits to having that water. But again, you know, we're going to learn a lot in these four years. We'll, we'll see. If, if there are any adverse impacts, I can't think of them as it relates to the, the, the stretch of, that we know as Silver Bow Creek from, from its headwaters to its mouth at the, at the Warm Springs Pond. So it's difficult for me to say. I, I guess if somebody made a case that said that the higher flows, and, and remember, we're only going to add the water to Black Tail, bring it to town... only going to add the water to Blacktail, bring it to town, and use it at the confluence when the flow is below the 10 million gallons. Our goal is to make sure there's always 10 million gallons of water flowing by and that equates to about 15 CFS. That's our goal. A lot of the time now, it is that much water. It flows that just fine. So, we're only bringing it into town when it's at low flows to sustain that even keel. And I can't imagine that having that much water on an even keel basis throughout the year is going to be anything but beneficial. So, I suppose if somebody made the case that darn it, there's too much water in Silver Bow Creek and I've been adversely affected, yeah, they'd probably make a case. I guess I would defer to the county attorney to determine whether we're liable, but yeah, I guess so. So, I hope that answered your question.
One follow-up.
Tom, thanks, Chief. So, with this, we're starting this, getting the water coming from Silver Lake, so it's flowing up here, it's getting to the, where it's going, I know where it's, I can't say that word out loud, I know where it's at, I can drive you there. Then it's going to be getting the water here, we'll know what it's doing, and then after this other stretch of the creek that we're trying to get fixed, then at that point, after that's fixed, we'll have this flow of water and know it's good and it works. I guess that's like in my dream of life, right? Does that make sense? That, I mean, we're going to be pumping the water up at that point and then we're going to have four years or whatever to clean all that stuff up so that eventually we can just stretch it up to that thing and start gushing her down, right?
Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, and Commissioner O'Neill, I think I understand what you're saying. And the, we believe that the best source of water for the stretch of the first mile, the first, you know, from Texas Avenue to Montana Street, is the treated water from the Berkeley pit operations. I mean, that makes the most sense. I mean, it's going to be treated right there. It's now going to be put in a pipeline during the five years when we're remediating the corridor. We're going to be putting that water in a pipeline like today. The water goes from the filtration plant in a pipeline that was built in 2004, and it discharges at the confluence as well. That's what happens today. Then the Silver Lake water will be discharged there at that same point. So, have a robust flow in Silver Bow Creek from that point forward. Once the corridor gets cleaned up and we got the groundwater collection properly handled, we got the tailings out of the way, we got the stormwater system in place, so we're keeping metals and stormwater out of the creek, I hope everybody just calms down and we can consider the idea of discharging the treated Berkeley pit water at that point. And if and to the extent we want to bring the Silver Lake water up that far, we already have the capability. We already have a tap on the Silver Lake pipeline, which we installed in 2004 when the Silver Bow Creek was rebuilt the first time, to do just that, to provide water to make the stream. And that was long before we had the opportunity to use cleaned and treated Berkeley pit water. So, at some point in the future, there's going to be an opportunity to use that water in that creative way. And we'll all be around when that happens. For now, we're doing it at the confluence, we're going to have the capability, and we're going to learn what the impacts are in advance of then making that move five years from now.
Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In the previous comments tonight, it was mentioned by Mr. Leoner from the Clark Fork Coalition that maybe the purpose is to dilute pollution. And the reason that we're attempting to bring water to town is to dilute the water, that the water that's being discharged maybe doesn't meet discharge standards. Could you clarify what the real purpose or if the discharge meets the clean standards?
Yes. Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, Commissioner McDonough, the, at one time, before the filtration plant, polishing plant was built on Continental Drive there, Shields Avenue, there was talk that the treatment process at the Horseshoe Bend Treatment Plant on the east rim of the pit was not going to treat Horseshoe Bend water, essentially Berkeley pit water, to the clean level that it would meet standards, that it would meet all metals standards. Subsequent to, and at that time, there was this notion of using augmentation, they call it, flow augmentation water, to mix with the treated Berkeley pit water so it could meet standard. That ship has since sailed. EPA has ruled out the use of flow augmentation to approve the remedy for mine flooding. And now the mine and ARCO are required to meet the metals standard at the discharge point of the pipe. They can't rely on the receiving stream or any water in the receiving stream to meet the metals standard. So, it's just not so. And as far as I know, and this is a question you should maybe direct to Mr. Thompson, is that they're doing it, that currently the discharge from the polishing plant is meeting metals standards as they are required under their consent decree. The other part of it is the wet test, they call it. One of the standards they got to meet under the, under their decree on mine flooding is that the water has to support the microorganisms in a certain way. And I have now exhausted my understanding of that, so I turn to Mr. Thompson.
John, it's going to be here, good to hear someone else's voice up here. Chief Executive, Commissioners, Commissioner McDonough, yeah, that was said earlier, but I do, as John stated, we've been discharging since September without this water, and we've met all of our limits, including a wet test that we conducted in October. This water is not needed for dilution purposes for mine flooding. In the same manner, it's not needed for dilution purposes to meet metro discharges either. But more water in the creek helps everybody, okay? It makes life easier for everybody. We don't have to have it, we don't need it, but it is good. But there is benefits, there's so many benefits to keeping a stream from going to that very low flow condition. And having this agreement in place now with a customer looking for a longer-term agreement to do this for Butte is a good thing for everybody in Butte, and that includes the mine. I'm not saying there isn't self-serving notions here. You know, Sister Mary Jo and I have talked about this a lot. A lot of the reason that we're looking at this agreement is securing water to Butte so it doesn't get allocated elsewhere and those rights don't get lost. That water in the Silver Lake, in the Silver Lake system supports over 700 of the best-paying jobs in Butte, family wage jobs at REC and at Montana Resources. Both of those businesses absolutely need this water. Now, we have our agreements, REC has their agreements. This is kind of icing on the cake to make sure there's always enough water for those jobs. And if we don't need it for the jobs, we can use it for recreation and other beneficial uses. But if we don't, if we don't start looking at what those impacts are and answering some of these questions that are being brought forward with real data, you know, that use could be compromised into the future. You've got to exercise these water rights or you're going to lose them. So, that being said, I don't know.
Mr. Sorge.
Haven't, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, John, and thank you, Mark, for being here. First, I got a comment and then I got a question. You know, Mike, my comment is that I do agree with Sister Mary Jo and I agree with Sean that I do believe a Silver Lake Advisory Board would be a good thing. You know, I think the, our community is going to be changing, the creek's going to be changing, everything's changing. You know, so, you know, we've got advisory boards for just about everything in our community, you know, so I think it'd be a good thing. I think it'd be something that, so it's something that should be looked at. Okay, my question should be, my next question is, listening to Mr. Griffin earlier, he was talking about the temperature of the water. Is there, is the temperature of the water monitored anywhere else of the Silver Lake water in the system? And if not, would this something that might be a good idea to throw into this agreement?
Chief Executive, Commissioners, Commissioner Sorge, yes, there is extensive monitoring, as Joe indicated, for flow in that system. And as part of priority soils, you know, I'm starting to learn some of that monitoring that's going on because of the discharge. And then through the discharge, we've got downstream monitoring as well. As Mr. Griffin pointed out, I don't believe that monitoring goes all the way to opportunity. So, it may be a wise move for the assessment of this agreement to, you know, look at some of that. There's also a lot of stream flow and temperature monitoring done by Fish, Wildlife, and Parks because they go down and they monitor the temperatures. That's how come we get houdal restrictions on fishing on Silver Bow Creek. So, there's a lot of other data floating around. I believe, you know, some of the Clark Fork Coalition folks and Trout Unlimited do some of their own independent monitoring too. So, maybe as part of the board that you're considering, you know, we could get some mechanism to pull all this monitoring together to look at that and see if there's gaps and then establish to fill the gaps.
Thank you, Mark. Sounds like a good idea.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, John, Mark. I'm comfortable with all your answers and questions that have been asked. I guess the one question to ask is Nordee Tretheway and Evan Barrett both said that they'd kind of liked to hold off on this until, for two or three weeks, until they found out what wet's decision was. I don't know where that comes into this. I mean, I don't see where it comes into it. And I don't see where a board had helped much on this one. We've, in my mind, we've got way too many advisory boards already, you know, that's too much cooks in the kitchen, kind of ruined things. So, what would your answer be to Nordee and Evan that holding up on this for a few weeks till they found out what wet did? I mean, I agree with what you're saying, I don't see, because it's the upper part of the creek they're talking about, we're talking about the lower part. So, just answer those concerns and I'd be ready to take a vote. Thank you.
John.
Chief Executive, Members of the council, Commissioner Fisher, I'm not seeing the necessity to wait on this. I mean, the longer we wait, the longer it will be before we can even start the process with the water court to even get going on whether we can use this water. There's every reason to believe that the feasibility study will show that it's entirely feasible to have a creek from Texas to Montana Street. We have, I think, got to a consensus that we're going to wait until we remediate the corridor, and that's going to take the full term of this agreement, four or five years. And as I said earlier, we really think that the best approach is to use the treated Berkeley pit water as the primary source of the stream up on the top end. And if we need to use some supplemental water from the Silver Lake, as you can see in the agreement, nothing in this agreement precludes our ability to bring that water up to Texas and nothing precludes our ability to entertain new customers downstream or new industrial users as we go forward. So, I think we're in a good spot, get this out of the way. I think that Mr. Tretheway's point about a lot of good things coming together at the same time is spot on between getting this agreement and having some in-stream flow on Blacktail Silver Bow and getting our agreement to move forward with the remediation of the corridor, get the park built, and we're going to be that much closer to reaching the goals of Restore Our Creek. So, I think it's all coming together. I don't think that waiting a couple more weeks or so is going to make any difference. It's not going to change our answers that we gave you tonight, it's not going to change the terms of the agreement. And as I said earlier, there's a really robust process that we're going to go through on the change authorization process that's going to speak to a lot of these holistic issues about what water we're going to use and how we're going to keep all the users together. I would defer to Mark as something else to add.
Mark.
Chief Executive, Commissioners, oh, did that turn itself off? Yeah. Commissioner Fisher, as the customer in this agreement, we would advance this agreement regardless of the outcome of that study. And we would look to use that water in the highest beneficial use for this community. And that may be a function of what comes out of the agreement, but it wouldn't, as John said, it would not change our willingness to engage in this agreement.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. At this time, I'd like to make motion that we concur and place on file Communication 19-602. Thank you.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the request in Communication 19-602 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. Section 3, ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary, Council Bill Number 19-15, Council Ordinance 19-15, Resolution 19-70. Section 4, ordinances and resolutions for final passage, Number 1, Council Bill Number 19-13, Ordinance Number 19-13. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Ordinance Number 19-13, and ordinance amending Title 12 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code B-SBMC entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, amending Chapter 12.12 entitled Sidewalk Maintenance, adding new section 12.12.052, amending section 12.12.070, 12.12.072, and 12.12.074, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill Number 19-13, Ordinance 19-13 on final reading and pass having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Bill 19-13, Ordinance 19-13 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
There are 10 yays and 2 nays.
Motion carries. We're to the Council Bill Number 19-14, Ordinance Number 19-14. Will the clerk please read the title?
Council Ordinance 19-14, an ordinance repealing Chapter 15.18 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code B-SBMC entitled Electrical Code and amending Chapter 5.04 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code B-SBMC entitled Business License, specifically adding section 5.05.115 to be entitled Electrical Wiring requirements and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill 19-14, Ordinance 19-14 on final reading and pass having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Bill Number 19-14, Ordinance 19-14 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and zero nay.
Motion carries. Resolution Number 19-68. Will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution Number 19-68, a resolution vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning the alleyway located in Block Number 1 of the Trevona addition to the city-county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, and the surplus ground land described by meets and bounds portions of the Ella Courts load, West Side MS Number 770, Lot 139, and the Manhattan load, MS... the Ella Quartz load, Westside MS Number 770, Lot 139, and the Manhattan load, MS Number 2647, Lot 585, specifically located in the southwest quarter of Section 13, Town Strip 3 North, Range 8 West, and more particularly described in Exhibit A and depicted on the map attached as Exhibit B, finding the necessary facts herein and providing for an effective date of this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Resolution 19-68 on final reading and pass having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to pass Council Resolution Number 19-68 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. Number 2, Council Resolution 19-69, will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 19-69, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application with the Department of Congress of the State of Montana for a Montana Community Development Block Grad Economic Development Program under the terms of the Community Development Act of 1974, 42 USC 5301 as amended.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Resolution 19-69 on final reading and pass having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to pass Council Resolution 19-69 on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
There are 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. It's time for any public comment on any matter not on the agenda. Seeing none, call your attention to calendar of other meetings and events and just remind you that Monday night will be the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Chief Executive Palmer, I just want to note on the calendar that, well, I know Sarda's not going to be meeting on the 24th at 6:00, and I'm assuming the other ones that are listed are not going to be meeting on the 25th, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Ev, as you mentioned earlier tonight, the Committee of the Whole Meeting is next Monday. So if you're planning on not being here for whatever reason, would you please let Barb know to make sure that we have a quorum for Monday? So, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I didn't know what it was. I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.